Ms. Virginia Bell?
Present.
Ms. Linda Cheney?
Present.
Ms. Joyce Porter? Dr. Kelly Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Miranda Watson?
Here.
Okay, first item received and considered for approval of 2018-19 operating. But I'm sorry, no. Person I love to...
Show the wrong one. Show the way. Am I... Sit back down. This is okay. Back here. Ms. Cheney?
Al? Al's on there. Ms. Cheney's already on there.
He's on that phone only.
Yeah, Al's on, yeah.
You're on the phone?
We got him.
Good evening, good evening. So we did a lot of work this past month. The majority of our vacancies have been filled. If you look to the back, we have only, well, we have two fifth grade positions available, and then we have one at the ELC, and then we have, forget the A&amp;T, and two at the College and Career Academy. So we're moving forward. The principals already have some other people lined up to end before these vacancies, so I'm sure they should be filled before school starts and be ready for our kids. If you see in the next column where it says new assignments, we did some shifting around to make sure that we put the best people in the best places for our students. So these are some of those new assignments to show what we've kind of moved some folk around to make sure the positions was filled and our students were receiving the best services that they could get. Do you have any questions?
So early learning center, you only need one teacher there?
Yes.
That's good.
And how many at the... Let me, I got it.
We have two.
Fairly. Two, two.
At the College and Career Academy?
Two.
Two, in what grade?
Two, and the College and Career, we have a PE teacher and we have a digital media teacher.
Oh, okay.
And that's one person that served, that's in the computer lab that assisted kids with...
And that computer lab service, what grade, 11?
Nine to 12. It's in the library. And we're fortunate to have the majority of our employees from the ELC return next year, so.
Oh, good.
Really good stability there in A&amp;T. Yes, ma'am. And I will have those numbers for you for next month as far as our turnover rates to let you see that from this, from last year to this year, it was a drastic change because we didn't have any people leaving this time. Well, a lot of our teachers who decided to stay with our students and our...
That's wonderful. That's going to make a difference to the students, too, so that's a good thing.
Yes, yes.
What's the, what's retaining them? What's going on?
Well, we did a couple of things. We went through Dr. Joseph. We initiated the attendance matters program to let our teachers and staff members know that we, how much we appreciate them. Then we also had the party patrol that was spearheaded with Dr. Joseph, Ms. Macy, some of our other staff to let our staff know we appreciate them, and we had some downtime with them. And then we just worked together. There was a lot more support given to the teachers to let them know that we're here to make, increase their capacity as well.
Good, good. Keep up that work. Wonderful.
Well, so let me be clear is that I had the idea, but the people who actually, you know, were on the ground doing the work, we all worked together as a team. So, you know, it's all of us working together. We also had the Believe or Prepare and the TIF where we were able to give our employees a bonus for returning and also give the $1,000 for the new employees. So, you know, you put all of that together, I think that it, you know, showed some results, some good results for us.
Yes.
Good, good. All right. Congratulations on that. Thank you. Any other? All right, thank you.
Budget and finance?
Ms. Virginia Bell?
Present.
Dr. Byron Hurst? Ms. Linda Cheney?
Present.
Dr. Kelly Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Amy Holland?
Here.
Dr. Candace Robertson? Ms. Tracy Womack?
Present.
First item approved, 2019-20 salary schedule. Yes, ma'am. So I have a hard copy for you all to take a look at as we go through it. And there, just to let you know upfront, there is one change that I need to make in one of the salary schedules. So as you know, the MFP was passed through this past legislature, which gave all of the certified teachers a $1,000 increase and gave staff or non-certifieds $500 increase. And it also gave additional funding to the school systems to, you know, do whatever they feel necessary that would benefit the school system. So what we did, we looked at the amount of money that we were going to receive and we, and in talking with also the union representative or president, Ms. Trish, we are giving all employees a $1,000 increase, okay? In addition to that, we are going to give our certified teachers an additional 500, which will bring their total increase to $1,500. We're going to give our staff an additional $200, which brings them up to $1,200 total increase. The central office staff and assistant principals will receive an additional $1,000, which will bring their salaries up an additional 2,000. And all chiefs, school principals, and our leadic director will receive an additional 3,000, which will give them a total of $4,000 increase. So what happened with that is our beginning teacher salary is now, let me get to the page, $37,000, $38,700. $38,700. So when you include the supplemental pay that they receive, that will bring the beginning salary to about $41,000, $42,000. So I think that, that making this change will make our salary competitive in the region.
You said that's for beginning?
Beginning salary will now be $38,700. Yes, ma'am. And remember, when we came in, it was $30,512.
Right.
So that's an increase of over $8,000 over the course of the years that we've been So if you just look through, you'll see the increases in the salaries and how that will impact all of the employees. One change, though, there was an error with the assistant principal salary scale. It was, it's supposed to be three, a total of $3,000. So the MFP column, the 519, that is the new, that's the increase, that's where the increase is reflected in the salary schedule.
Assistant principal?
Yes, ma'am. It's not four, it's 3,000. So their starting salary will now be $63,100. We also gave the 1,000 to the alternative certified, people who will be in the alternative certified certification program. So these all are non-certifieds. They were receiving 24, they'll now receive 25,000 a year. Any questions about anything in the salary schedule?
Just so that they know, the support people are getting what the state gave them and a thousand from the school?
No. They get $1,000 that, you know, they get, well, the support got $500. That was coming from the state. So we included an additional 500 to make it 1,000 for everyone across the board, but then an additional 200. So you're looking at an additional $700 that support workers will be receiving.
From the school?
From the, yes, ma'am.
I just hope that everybody see that it's trying to be a fair game across the board, not one-sided either way, you know?
Right.
You know, I mean...
Some people will.
Right, but still.
It's a good standard.
Exactly, exactly.
And...
And you know what the state gave, and then to supplement that, you know, I mean, you can't please everybody, but at least...
Want them to know that they're getting more from the district than they are from the state.
Exactly, exactly. That's a good point.
That's the point.
And it's a starting point.
Yes, it is.
You know what I'm saying? We've come a long way. You think about it, from 30 to 38.
It's included in their salary and that's what they should know. It's a good thing. I'm not complaining at all.
Yeah.
And it just feels good to be competitive.
Right, right.
Yes, we are absolutely competitive now, definitely. And what brings us to that level is the change with the supplemental pay, that new employees will receive that pay in December, which is the full cent, and then they'll receive it again in June, and then after working the full year, they then in September will get the half cent. So they'll get the full amounts for the supplemental pay that following year. So that also helped with, you know, I think helped with maintaining our employees.
And then just remind for that, whatever the state gave in some areas, that's all they get.
That's all they get.
Yeah. So keep that, you know, there's something to think about.
I just hope they know that.
That they will.
So let's just go through it right quick because I wanted to also share with you the additional positions that were included in the salary schedule that were excluded the last time around. So we do have an assistant superintendent position, and that is reflected in the salary schedule. That is on page 14. Like I said, the change for the assistant principal, the MFP, that, that's an error, so it's 3,000. On the next page, there isn't anything that needs to change there. Looking to the next page and through, high school band, reading specialists, executive master teachers, all of them, you see what the increases for them will be. The non-certified administrative personnel, the director of child nutrition and wellness. So at this time, I want Ms. Womack to come to the podium. Before I explain to you her salary change, I want her to explain the good things that's happened in the food service department since she started in 2014.
What page is that on?
That would be on page 23.
Good evening, board. Ms. Holland is passing out a prayer for everyone can understand and see what's going on. When I came, the first year, if you look down... Thank you so much. I love my glasses, I'm so sorry. Okay, just a little bit, thank you, Mr. Moran. 2013, 2014, this is where you were, $476,073.10. When I came in, in '15, I brought in the CEP, which everybody eat free. I brought a lot of opportunities. That first year, we jumped to 706,8815.15. That is a $292,292.742.
Increase in...
Yes.
And claims.
The next year, 2015-16, if you can see, it was a continued jump, all right? And it was like a $20,902 steady increase. Next year, next year, it was a $16,832 increase. The next year, it was $50,894.20. As of today, my department was $72,000 from a million dollars. First time ever. And that came with a lot of hard work, a lot of sacrifices. You know, when you have a superintendent tell you, I want this, this, and this done, you know, you have to figure it out. So my, my goal and my vision for my department is to be the best department in the United States. And we is showing that, and we are showing out and saying, "Helena here," with the food service department. So with that being said, just be patient with us, and I promise you, we're going to hit the mill next year.
So with that being said, her salary schedule has changed. She's now director of child nutrition and wellness, and her starting salary is at $55,000. I think it's well deserved that she can, she can now sustain her own salaries and all the salaries of the employees within the food service department. I remember when I first got here, we had to subsidize the food service department by several thousands of dollars. And now they are self-sufficient, standing on their own, and now bringing in close to a million dollars. So we are very proud of the work that Ms. Womack has done since she's gotten here, and you can see the fruits of her labor. Another thing, we have the instructional technology manager that was included. And also what was missing from last year was the food service field manager. That salary has been included. Under non-certified school board employees, on page 25, we have a transportation assistant position that is a part-time position, a 10-month part-time position. We added this position because it's, it's just not feasible anymore to have Ms. Leatris, who is the, you know, the secretary for the board and for, you know, the superintendent, to also do the transportation, you know, run a transportation department. So now we are going to have an, a transportation assistant that will be part-time, who will come in and do the bulk of that work that Ms. Leatris was doing. She will still provide the assistance because it is just a part-time position, but we feel that it's necessary to take some of the load off of Ms. Leatris so she can really do the job that she is, you know, supposed to do. And on the next page, 27, we have a truancy officer position. This is a much-needed position. We have a lot of issues with kids at the start of the school year, trying to figure out where they are and trying to get them back in school. So we included this position. This person will assist with Ms. Overton and also with our student information, with Ms. Washington, and just everybody who goes out, and, you know, the school secretaries and the principals, just going out trying to find kids and making sure that they are in school. So if they miss, you know, an excessive amount of days, we'll catch them. If, you know, at the start of the year, before October 1, if they miss more than five days, you know, we have to go and do a search, well, actually it's three. Do a search, five days, we actually go out and do home business and stuff. So now with a truancy officer, we'll be able to do that in addition to being able to be that representative for the district at, in court when we talking about truancy and all kind of other issues that our kids go through when they are in the court system. So that is a much-needed position that we have included. And then the last change, we just, you know, fixed up the purchasing agent position. We don't have a purchasing agent, but we wanted to just clear that up as well. Any questions about the salary schedule? So I'm asking that you approve the 2019-2020 salary schedule.
Can I get a motion? I saw a motion. Motion about this change. You were short of you. Oh. Okay, have a motion, it's like a... Any other questions? If not, we'll vote.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Receiver motion here, first approval.
Okay, next item, Mr. Received and Considered for Approval, the 2018-19 operating budgets revision.
Good afternoon. This is just our year-end budget revision to get our budget in line with our grant expenditures and any variances that we had. The first section is general fund. Had to revise the revenues, the local revenues. Actually, our property tax was down quite a bit this year, so I had to revise that down. And as you see in the state revenues, there's been over $100,000 increase, and that's based on our MFP student count, mid-year increases that we had. As you look down, revised down in most sections of the expenditures for the year, and we will end the year, what, it looks like a deficit, it's really not, but it's $769,354. A portion of that 1.2 million is the transfer that y'all reserved to fund balance last year. I don't know if you remember, you reserved it for the band complex. So I had to transfer that money. So it's not a deficit as far as the state's concerned, it's just a transfer out. So, so for the year, we actually had a surplus of about $500,000. Added to our fund balance of $5.8 million, we should end the year at $5.1 million. And these are preliminary, they're not completely closed out, but pretty close to it. So that will be general fund. The second section is special revenues. And these are all our grants. I would highlight the third one, the child nutrition, that's child nutrition, and Ms. Womack had also an equipment grant that she got for $15,000, which she purchased a oven. And the fresh fruits and vegetables was about $50,000 this year. So you will see that she did hit 1.000 over a million dollars with her grants. We had, basically, I just revised to what was spent here. Our summer feeding program was right at $13,000. In the circle grant, we had $453,492. So our total grants for the year are $4,950,170. The last section is capital projects. The first one is the, our maintenance fund, we call it. Our revenues were $670,000. As you'll see, our advise down $80,000. So our property tax was considerably down this year, but our sales tax was up. So, and talking to the Cessar's office, there was like four oil wells that they had to take off the rolls, that they kind of, we had took a hit on, but the Cess value's going to be up this coming year, so I thought, you know, it should go back up. But we did take a hit with that. Our total expenditures are $1.6 million. This is the fund in which the band complex is paid out of. So our excess for the year for that is $305,625. We'll end the year on that with $690,000. But I would say we still have about $400,000 left on the band complex at the high school, so that would come out of that balance. So that's not, once the band complex is out, we're going to be around $300,000.
And we should be finished with the music building this month. We went in today and looked at it, and they're almost, they're just about finished with it.
That's, that's basically it. Y'all have any questions? That 1.3 million that we, that you reserve for capital projects, we have 1.1 million of it for the band complex. I think the budget is at $936, but there's some contingencies they have in there. But the balance of that, we have used to renovate this cafeteria at Shada at 90, almost $93,000 was spent there. Security cameras at the high school of $27,000. Basketball court at the high school?
The A&amp;T.
The A&amp;T was right at $30,000. New windows were put in the ELC cafeteria at $20,000, and a few various things around $5,000. So it was over $170,000 in repairs that we were able to make this year from that reserve. So...
Good thing.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Motion. Second, Mr. Travis? You have a question? We'll take a vote.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Here.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Receiver motion here, first approval.
Okay, last item is to approve requests in December and May of each year as payment distribution periods for insurance assistance to owner operators on bus drivers.
Yes, as you recall, we, you all approved for the bus drivers to receive some support in their insurance premiums because they were going up. And so what we didn't do was set up clear procedures on when that money would be allocated. So we are requesting that you approve that it be allocated in December and June of each year. May, I'm sorry, May and December of, December and May of each year.
Okay. I saw...
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Cheney, second. Vote.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Receiver motion here, first approval.
Okay, back into the budget process.
Bill and Lynn Brown, committee, we come to order. Roll call.
Ms. Linda Cheney?
Present.
Ms. Joyce Porter?
Present.
Ms. George Keen?
Present.
Dr. Kelly Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Angelina Tanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Who waiting on what's to use?
Ms. Bell, can I get you to fill in for the time pin and we can proceed?
First item, receiving and considered for approval, termination of service contract with Comfort Plus. Yes. Right now, Comfort Plus is on a month-to-month contract with us, and I'm asking that we no longer use the services of Comfort Plus because we now have maintenance agreements with Matthews Construction and also Marks and Letcher. And they can complete the, the work of what Comfort Plus was doing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bell. Motion by Ms. Porter, second by Ms. Bell. Questions? No questions? Vote.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Please see your motion here, first approval.
Maintenance report, Ms. Angelina Tanner?
So before Ms. Tanner gets up and talk about the various things going on within the district, there's one item that we need to really sit in and discuss. I received an email this evening from Gail Dunn with Southeast Community Health Systems requesting that they place an item on the agenda. They have some concerns about the trailer that we moved. As you all know, we are doing a lot of construction on that site, and one of the first things we did last school year was move that trailer to a new location. And there has been delays with the weather and, you know, whatever other issues that they've had on the daily. And two major concerns that they have, one is with the...
The internet.
Internet phone reconnection services that they had received bids from. They actually received two, one from Unity, which is now, well, it was Hunt's, you know, we do work with Hunt's. They're our service provider. And another was with ICT and...
ICT.
ICT. And we do have issues with ICT. ICT currently owes the school system money for, through the E-rate issues, and, you know, it's been a minute since we've discussed it, but I do know that we are looking to recruit those funds. And so that is not a company, you know, I believe the school board should, you know, get into any agreements with considering that that company still owes us money. Unity, well, it's Unity, it was Hunt's. We, we have a service agreement with Hunt's, and so I believe that it... They actually received two, one from Unity, which is now, well, it was Hunt's, you know, we do work with Hunt's. They're our service provider. And another was with ICT. And ICT. And, um, we do have issues with ICT. ICT currently owes the school system money for, um, through the E-rate, um, issues. And, you know, it's been a minute since we've discussed it, but I do know that we are looking to recruit those funds. And so that is not a company, you know, I believe the school board should, you know, get into any agreements with considering that that company still owes us money. Unity, uh, was Unity, it was Hunt's. We, we have a service agreement with Hunt's. And so I believe that it would be in our best interest to move forward with Unity. That's one concern that they have. Another concern they have is the electrical reconnects. And so we also have Marks Electric that is here to discuss the issues with that. If we need to, we can bring it back before the board in August to, you know, clear up things. But I believe that, uh, we should, we could finalize everything and get everything done, uh, properly. I was not, um, involved in the day-to-day work that was taking place. That's why I have Ms. Tanner to come up and give you, um, you know, an explanation of what's been going on to this point. So once he finishes and once, uh, we have Marks Electric here, he comes up and explains his side, then we can have a discussion about how to proceed.
Yes, good evening, board. On the community health center issue, that's what I need to talk about first. Okay, we have, um, Marks Electric was going to do the final adjustments to the community health center building. As far as the compressor, that needs to be hooked up in the back of the building. And once he came to give his diagnostic, um, on that building and the wiring, he said that it was kinda of the wrong wiring that they were using to begin with. And that he wouldn't be able to hook it up by him being a licensed electrician with the wiring that they had because it was not the right wiring in the beginning. So he was going to, um, put new wiring in that was compatible for their equipment that they have. And, but that cost shouldn't be on the school board. And so they gonna need, they, they would need a breakdown as to what they would pay versus what we would pay. And they wanted extra lighting and I don't think we would be responsible for the extra lighting that they need as far as that. And he did give them a date that he would do the services, which was today, Thursday, but he was kinda backed up on his days as far as that, so. But he did assure us that it would be done tomorrow, um, if she still wanted to do the services. And that's the issue she has with the electrical.
Would you like to come up and tell your?
Mark, with Marks Electric is here, so.
Good evening. What, what we found when we were with that working, we actually, at the start of that project, the, the disconnect, we disconnected the electrical, but we didn't disconnect anything in that little room that they store the compressors in. Uh, and I think their maintenance, they had a maintenance company or somebody that come in and disconnected all that stuff. So we really wasn't even, uh, prepared to hook it back up since we didn't do any of the disconnect. And when she brought it to my attention that she, that we needed to run the power back to it, we noticed the type of wiring that they used. They got, uh, a couple pieces, different pieces of equipment there, but they're only running one line to it, which, which is the wrong wire to begin with. And each piece of equipment should have its own circuit. And what I proposed to do is to bring them the, the double circuits that they needed in conduit, which they don't have conduit. They, they got like a flexible conduit right now that's laying underneath the trailer. And if that flex line was to break where it's connected at, it could energize the trailer itself. And the trailer sitting on a slab, which could be consequences on somebody. So I couldn't hook the power back up to that. Me knowing what's right and what's wrong, uh, it's just a violation on code. That's why we turned it down. Well, I submitted the price to install the proper wiring and get them back online. And that's when the situation came up on the breakdown and who's paying for what and just different things. And I just never had time to get back around to it. Uh, and some other stuff I was trying to get done. And I came out a couple days ago and, uh, took another look at it and talked with their people, the ma- the maintenance guy, and told him, hey, we could, you know, do this, get you your right stuff. And then he spoke with, uh, Ms. Gail. And she said she wanted a, a different type of fixture on the exterior of the building facing west. So, uh, that had to be included in the price. And then he also stated that they wanted multiple receptacles in that room. And I'm not aware if they had receptacles in that room, so that sounds like additional work. And I guess the question is, do, do they pay for that or do the school system pay for that?
So we're of the position that, well, one, um, this is being brought before you all because Southeast requested that it come before you all. I had, I not, didn't have the opportunity to speak with Ms. Dunn or anybody from Southeast about it, um, which is fine. You know, they requested that it come before you all. And, um, so here it is. So, but I don't recommend that we pay for anything that, you know, is within the building because it, you know, it's not our responsibility. If we're going to connect something, right, reconnect any kind of power to the building, we need to make sure that they have the right, uh, wiring that will connect properly, right? Because we don't want to be held liable for something that may go wrong because they don't have the right equipment within their facility. We spent about thirty-nine thousand dollars so far just moving that trailer from one place on that campus to another. And, um, we have done it in good faith and we have done it, um, and I think Ms. Gail has also been, you know, very cooperative and, you know, we both understand all of the, the delays with the weather and, you know, different things that have occurred, but it's still moving forward. And so.
What do you need us to do?
I, I, I guess my question is, um, who broke it down? I mean, who took the wire and the board?
That's, I think it was whoever their maintenance people is, that they had the compressors. That's who disconnected all that stuff.
And who, 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 who was responsible for getting in? Southeast?
They, they wanted to be, um, to, with recourse.
Okay, they wanted to be, so they're still not finished with their work, have we contacted them? Because they're not done.
So they, um, yeah, they did the bid process because we asked them to do the bid process.
Okay, so the connect, reconnect was not in the bid process?
You talking, you referring to the wiring inside?
Yeah, the wiring, because that's an issue. Because what can they do if they don't have internet phones and things down there? So my question is, was the reconnect not considered in the bid?
They was, yeah, they were just gonna dismount, move it, set it back in place. Now, I don't know who, um, disconnected the internet and the phone lines, don't know who did that. Don't know who disconnected the wiring from the compressor and all that.
All we did is the main power. We disconnected the main power from the building, so they didn't have anything connected when they got ready to move it. Uh, when they broke the building down from the, the double and singled it off, whoever disconnected the compressors inside is the person that disconnected the line underneath the building. So I, I don't know if that was a maintenance person or somebody else.
And that was not included in the setup fee? So. So if it wasn't, then who, who, who it look like is leaning back to, to be responsible for doing it? Whoever did the bids, if that wasn't included, if it wasn't included in the bid, it has to reconnect it. It has to be set up. Somebody has to be responsible for it. We can't leave a disconnected school getting ready to start. I mean, somebody is responsible or somebody need to be responsible.
They had a maintenance person, from my understanding, speaking with one of their guys, that actually came out and disconnected the compressors. I took that as that's the person that disconnected the wiring. So if they had, their maintenance people disconnected, I was under the impression that they should have been the one to come back and connect it.
And Southeast is the one that's servicing the bids.
So y'all had nothing to do with the bidding process with that? Okay, so, we need to talk to them. They should be responsible, obviously. I mean, it's not, we can have anything to do with that, but we do understand that they're on the school campus. We can meet them halfway, but not completely in that sense, I would say.
Not anything on the inside of the building. Everything with the connect, with the, um, remove, with the, you know, transference of that building from one spot to the next, yes, we are fully responsible for. And we said that from the very beginning. And we have taken it, we spent over thirty-nine thousand, or thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand on that, uh, on the moving of it. So my question to you is, how do you want to proceed with that? Do you want them to, uh, meet with me and my administration to, you know, carry out the details? Or do you want them to come back to you next month and hash it out here? We, we can't wait. I mean, school is getting ready to start. Right, because the. Yes, they, but they made the request that it come straight to the board and they did not. I haven't had the opportunity to. Yes, I got it.
You can put my name on it if you want. Letting them know our policy on getting stuff on the agenda ahead of time.
Okay, Ms. Luck, you have a question?
Yes. I'm not that much into electric, but I do have a question. Southeast contracted a gentleman to move the building and set it up, so they have a written contract with them, right? If they do, is there any way that we can get a hold of that contract and read it and see if they're supposed to reset up everything? Because if not, they haven't, they haven't done the job.
And again, I, I, I think as it relates to issues with the Southeast, we can look at the agreement that we have with the, that they had with the board and address those issues. I, I don't think we need to get into right now as far as who Southeast did it to and whether they should have, should not have, if they move it forward, we can have that conversation with them, find out what, what the situation is in the fall. But to, but to answer things academically or theoretically right now, I don't think it's a purpose.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think.
Yeah, we can authorize Dr. Joseph to handle it. Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to elect Dr. Jel- uh, Dr. Joseph to handle the situation with Southeast, uh, Community Health System. And that motion was by Ms. Bell. Bell?
Am I still, or did we switch out? He's back.
Ms. Bell?
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm motion to, uh, authorize Dr. Joseph to handle the situation with Southeast.
And I knew you were going to say, so I'll second it. Motion by Ms. Bell, second by Ms. Cheney. No questions? Vote.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
I'm staying.
Thank you. We'll talk about that later. Are you, are there any other items on your maintenance report?
The construction is still going on at the high school, um, on the seventh and eighth grade building. It is coming along tremendously, very well. They are actually painting now. And the deadline, we gave them a deadline of July the twenty-fifth, so hopefully they will be completed and ready to move desks in for the students to arrive on the first of August on that building. So if you pass by, you can see the different look on the outside as well as the inside net. And like Dr. Joseph said, the band room will be ready for the school year. And the ANT, they are still working hard on that as well. The deadline, I'm not sure it's going.
It's in September. The deadline for that is in September, but of course, you know, with the rain, we had to push it back to October. So we're going to work with the contractors to have a contingency plan for our students because we do start school on August first.
Yes, and that's about it. Thank you.
All right, that concludes the building round committee. The meeting room, we come to order, we're now holding a meeting of the Sanlina Parish School Board. Roll call.
Ms. Joyce Porter?
Present.
Dr. Byron Hurst? Ms. Linda Cheney?
Present.
Ms. Jordan Hie?
Present.
Ms. Virginia Bell? Mr. Alton Travis? Five days, one absent.
All right, first item, approve minutes and agenda from June thirteenth, twenty nineteen committee meeting, June thirteenth, twenty nineteen regular board meeting and the current, uh, current agenda. Can I get a motion by someone? Motion by Mr. Travis, second by Ms. Porter, that we all approve all collectively. Any question? No questions, she passed by General Counsel. Item C. Public comment? No vote. Item two, adopt the mileage rate for twenty nineteen. Okay, so items two is the adopted mileage rate for twenty nineteen. Item three is the adopt the bond rate for twenty nineteen. And item four is to adopt the twenty nineteen mileage and bond rate resolution. So I'm gonna do items two, three, and four. Can I get a motion to do that? Motion by Ms. Porter, second by Mr. Travis. All right. Sanlina School Board, Sanlina Parish School District Resolution. Be resolved, the following mileage are hereby levied on the twenty nineteen tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by Sanlina Parish School District. School District Parishwide, MT one zero six three zero two one, nine point two five zero miles. School District Grekla, SP one zero six three zero two zero, three point three zero zero miles. School District Construct, AM one zero six three zero three one, four point eight eight zero miles. School District Parishwide, SB one zero six three zero four eight, sixteen miles. School District Parishwide, Bun, one zero six three zero four seven, ten point one hundred miles. Be a further resolve that the proper administrative officials of the parish of Sanlina, State of Louisiana, be and they are hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread said taxes as herein above set forth upon the assessment roll of said parish for the year twenty nineteen and to make the collection of the taxes imposed forth and on behalf of the taxing authority or according to law and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege on all properties subject to taxation as herein set forth and collection thereof shall be enforceable in the manner provided by law. The foregoing resolution was read in full, the roll was called, and adoption thereof, and the resolution was adopted by the following votes. All right? Can I get a motion?
A motion that we, uh, adopt the resolutions for the milages for twenty nineteen.
And the phone?
All right, motion by Ms. Bell. Second by Ms. Porter. Uh, roll call.
Ms. Joyce Porter?
Yes.
Dr. Byron Hurst is absent. Ms. Linda Cheney?
Yes.
Mr. George Hugh?
Hugh.
Ms. Virginia Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Alton Travis?
Yes.
Five days, one absent. Motion here.
Certificate, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and exact copy of the resolution adopted at the board meeting held on July eleventh, twenty nineteen, at which meeting that Juan was present and loaded, Greensboro, Louisiana, this eleventh day of July, twenty nineteen. Dr. Kelly Jones, superintendent. All right? So the next item is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, community, and good evening, board members. I do have a few announcements. First is a reminder about our leadership summit and board retreat that will be held July twenty-first and twenty-second at LSU. The theme this year is let's get lit to receive. We want to get lit with literacy. So our focus this year will absolutely be on literacy because we understand the importance of it. And we have partnerships with Scholastic and other organizations to help get our kids interested and develop a love for reading. We know that literacy is the foundation for kids and their pursuit to learn as much as they can learn. We did provide reading, summer reading books for all of our students, kindergarten through eleventh grade or through twelfth grade, our rising twelfth graders. So every kid received their books and we're expecting them to read it over the summer months. And when they return, there is an assignment that they need to submit. They submit it and they're successful with that assignment, they will be eligible for our first annual literacy bash, which will be held on August sixteenth at the Fifth Ward Recreation Center. So we're excited about that. So we want everyone to read, read, read. Next thing on my agenda, I will be out July sixteenth through nineteenth for the Racial Equity Leadership Network. I have been selected by this organization to learn about racial equity in school systems. I'm very excited about this learning opportunity. Looking at this year as a learning year for me and just trying to do a lot of things because I believe in order to make the right decisions for kids and teachers in the classroom, you have to be the lead learner. So this is one thing that I'm doing along with being a math content leader and also a class observer, just passed that test. I'm happy that I passed it. It's done. So that's done, so I'm a certified class observer, looking to be a certified math content leader, and then also participating in this Racial Equity Leadership Network that will, you know, teach me and all of the other people in the cohort about policies and things that we can do to make sure that our students receive an equitable education. So I'm very excited about that. That is July sixteenth through nineteenth. The math content leader training is July twenty-third through twenty-sixth, so that's immediately after our leadership summit and board retreat. I've already done one day, I've got one day down, so I've got four days the end of July and then four remaining days throughout the school year. We will have our teacher PD July twenty-ninth through thirty-first. We're excited about that because school starts August first. We're getting a jump start in the year, this year. We will end a little bit early. You all approved that calendar, the school year calendar, a couple of months ago, so we're now implementing that. Like I said before, we will have a contingency for our kids at the A and T as the facility is going through the construction phase that will be finished by October. There is a back-to-school event at Lazar Temple, August fourteenth at six P M. So I'm asking for our staff and principals and as many teachers as we can to come out and support this event. Lazar Temple is a true partner in education with our school system and we need to be there and support them in their efforts. I do want to, and didn't get the opportunity last board meeting, to thank you all for your vote of confidence in extending my contract or renewing my contract for an additional two years. I look forward to working with San Alina and being here and doing what's right for kids, so thank you very much for that. And that concludes my report.
All right. Item. All right. Committee reports, approved committee reports, July eleventh, twenty nineteen.
I'm over here, approve the committee reports.
Motion by Mr. Travis.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell that we approve the committee reports. Any questions?
Question. With the, um, have we pulled the building ground?
Uh huh.
That's with Southeast. That, that, that committee.
Okay, so we will approve all committee reports except for the Southeast Community Health System. All right. Motion by Mr. Travis, second by Ms. Bell to approve them all except for that one. Any question? No question? Those should pass by General Counsel. Committee report, item relating to the Southeast Community Health System, which Dr. Joseph will deal with that situation. Can I get a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Travis.
My second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Porter?
Abstaining.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Forty-eight, one extension, motion carried.
All right. Next meeting date will be August eighth, twenty nineteen, five forty-five, committee meeting, regular board meeting, six o'clock. Closing committee, any board members?
Okay, I would like to make the announcement that we will be sharing the two thousand nineteen, meet twenty, twenty-five test results with you all at the August board meeting. And we will also recognize all of our students who earned advanced mastery on those assessments from third grade all the way through to eleventh grade, so that inclusive of the E O C scores. So we're looking forward to sharing those results with you.
Ms. Clark?
Publicly announced. Public hearing, special board meeting, July thirty-first?
All right. No comments? Famous motion. Oh, yay. Nina Jones.